Very second, 2024. Happy New Year. There are two items on the agenda. First of these is continued discussion regarding the internal audit program. So let's go to that. All right. And then we change playing fields. All right.
It's about the same, but a little more.
Okay. I worked off the other one. What I thought we'd do is just go through it, space by space. The first of these, I know we've been talking about a charter. And it may just be me, but I would rather call it a protocol. Because really, when I think about a charter, citizens charter, chartered the city. And so, we're not, we're citizens, but we're not that group chartering a new thing. It's the correct word usage, but I would just be, but having a charter inside a charter doesn't make sense to me logically. What do you guys think?
Is it, is it ordinance, is it a resolution?
It'd be a protocol to me.
What is it?
I'm asking.
It's a policy.
Policy?
Yeah, that would be adopted by resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, but I think it's confusing to call it charter. And when we have a charter, because everyone thinks that, oh, the citizens should have to vote on it. Because that's how our charter works. So yeah, if we can say, policy or.
What do we call you and Daryl? What are your positions?
They're employment contracts. Aren't they?
We don't have.
You don't have any.
We have our own separate departmental policies.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I can see where it would be confusing to have a charter within a charter. But just as a professional practice, it is typically referred to as an internal audit charter. Like OU, I don't know about Oklahoma City, but you know, it is in the profession as internal audit referred to as a charter. So, but I can see where it would be confusing.
So, what I'm, what I'm seeing is the audit, the internal audit charter is not so much implemented into city law. More than is presented on the city's website page as an internal, so you have the internal audit page. And then the internal auditor office, the internal audit page site would basically have the internal charter on, internal audit charter on.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the word. Let's change it to policy or protocol.
What does Oklahoma City's?
Charter.
Charter. They have a charter.
I mean.
Every internal audit department within, in every organization has it, it needs a charter in order to operate, in order to exist as a profession.
So this is, in, this language is industry standard?
Yes, that's industry standard. I'm only presenting in anything that.
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, so then, in that vein, then I'd rather it be similar to every other working.
That's my goal, is to make it so uniform that it's timey.
But it will still be adopted by resolution?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Policy and procedure will be adopted by resolution. The creation of the audit committee will also be adopted by resolution.
Okay. Then I'm for keeping it as charter and we just will have to do some education.
Give it a stage name.
Give it a stage name.
Yeah, on the website or something.
In talking to people, particularly, they, they, they're quoting ordinance to me. And they're saying, this is in the charter. No, it's not the charter. It's in, it's an ordinance. And so, sometimes it's not even that, so.
So, counsel, it sounds like an opportunity for some civic IQ where Shakira may be able to work closely with Tiffany to kind of do some.
Podcast.
Yeah, some, that would be perfect, to do some spots, just to let the community know. And that the community can also go to these other organizations and find very similar documentation. So, it just provides comfort to the community, what they're, what they're seeing.
It, it works, as long as we're hopefully in there. The next thing would be, and you're aware, as the Office of the City Auditor was established as a division, I would say as an employee of the city. The, there are divisions underneath the departments here. And so, that'd put you at a level that you're not, more than anything. It'd be an employee of the council, adopting the position of the city auditor. What do we call it, charter? On May 24th, we did that?
That's when the voter, was that the date of the charter amendment?
Oh, got it.
The governor approved it, I think.
Okay. I, I just, it didn't ring any bells. Then going down to the next day.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So, if we're going to build out personnel underneath Shakira, underneath this position, does it have to be a division? Like, does the language matter here?
I think department's probably the language.
It's the charter. And it would be like the legal departments, the easiest, I think.
So is that what we're saying? Change it to department?
Department or something, but not a division.
Yeah, okay.
And that, I usually think of a division as a division of a department.
Right.
Yeah, we have divisions within departments.
So that's, I guess, my, my organization structure because it was formed under the Office of City Clerk? Internal Audit?
No, it's actually under counsel.
Under the council, but city clerk is administrative.
Yeah, I administer council's budget. And so, that's why, that's why I process your, your time sheets.
Thank you, Brenda.
Definitely.
That'd be a real, that'd be a hard one.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I don't want that.
I know.
Notice how fast she was to get up.
No, 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 no.
And I've got a question about, it says in here that in compliance with laws, regulations, et cetera. We don't have regulations, do we? Don't we have ordinance and, and procedure? Or is, am I picking at straws?
Yeah, I think a little bit picking at straws there. Our ordinances are our laws, but it might be referring to applicable state and federal laws, depending on the, the audit being conducted.
That's fine. Then down to whereas the independence and public accountability of the city auditor should be assured by provision of council. Right? Appointed city, council-appointed city auditor. Instead of legislatively. And then, now therefore it be resolved, the end, the second sentence on that. The audit charter for the office, I would call a position, of the city auditor.
Or the department of?
Department of. That would work. All right. Oh, and before we start on the next part of it, we have to design this in, in our minds. How are we thinking about this committee? The way that, that the audit committee's going to start up in here. But everything, if we don't start now to design that audit committee, we can't get to it. My thought of the audit committee would be the finance committee and any other people on council that want to be there. Shakira will mention in here, we're not there yet. Shakira will mention in here that it's, it's, it's quite an elegant solution to a council. But it also includes members of the public that'll come in. We'll invite them in like we would a committee. So, we don't do that on any other committees. And do we really want to do that? Do we have to do that by, again, it'll come back to your professional standards. Do we want, how do we want to design this committee? I would say just the finance committee.
Well, it does say in here that it's two council members, three at large, and the at-large has to be.
That's real elegant.
So, with that, it's very, that was just example. So, it's, it's ideal for someone with accounting or the experience to be chair. And then have three or four, five other members, a couple of those being community at large. But it could be, I guess, modified in any way as long as there's city council and members of the public on the committee. Now, the finance committee, I, I too was very interested in possibly that kind of doubling as an audit committee with a, a community member. So I'm, I'm for it.
Sure. Well, it's, it's the committee member that, that.
Can we put Francisco on it?
No, there's, so no city, no manager and no director.
We may be auditing him.
Okay.
We're just staff, but not on the committee.
Okay.
So I, I understand the thought process behind doing, you know, having an audit committee. But I do think it probably would be best suited to be under the finance committee. Because even trying to get, you know, volunteer at-large members throughout the community, I will tell you, it will be extremely difficult to get a licensed professional such as myself to volunteer to serve on this committee. And previously being an internal audit, sometimes you do come across some very sensitive information that really should be not publicly displayed.
Right.
So.
So without a quorum of council members in the finance committee, Catherine, could they meet behind closed doors?
So. Like, if there was a sensitive item, can we go into executive session?
The challenge is, we have adopted a resolution and we've adopted an ordinance that says any committee, subcommittee of the council or created by the council has to follow the open meeting act. So only closed doors if there's an executive session qualifying item. The other piece of that, I mean, we could look at changing that and just allowing this committee to, to operate separately with less than a form of council potentially. But the open meeting act also deals with, it also defines public bodies pretty broadly if you're dealing with expenditure of public funds.
So, Catherine, I, I would say the, the resolution that adopted that framework was obviously before the community approved the position of the internal auditor. And as there's generally accepted accounting principles, are there generally accepted audit principles that? Because Oklahoma City has, has a, an audit committee that I'm sure, we, we need to set it up like they've already set it up and lived through. They're able to discuss sensitive matters without it being on the front page of the newspaper until it's ready. So we may want to drill into a little bit how Oklahoma City addresses those sensitive issues and then formulate that in.
Yeah, because our resolution is so broad for us, we don't really worry much about what the open meeting act says in terms of what doesn't qualify, because everything does here. So I would want to look at that language too, to be sure exactly how that, you know, expenditure of public funds qualifying language would work in this instance.
So, with, with that instance, auditing and investigation reports are made public through the website, the Norman website, the city. So, but then we would have to educate whoever's on the committee that is public, that whatever information is being discussed or they're guiding me on, that they're aware that this shouldn't become public until the investigation or audit is complete.
And, and, and if, if there was something criminal or something, I, I think the public has a good right to know how its money's spent. A hundred percent on that. If we have a criminal act or a, maybe it's not even up to that level, but a, a poor act. I think we'd want to release that very gently through either legal or whatever. There's a comment in here later on that you go to DA.
It's a process.
But I'd let, I'd let legal do it first. We'll get to that.
Yes.
And so, what we're thinking in my, in my, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just have questions about if this is the finance committee and then you're adding people to it, which I, the last time we talked about it at finance was, this would be quarterly?
Yes.
So it wouldn't be every month, it would just be every, every three months, basically. But what I heard too is that there couldn't be a quorum of council? And to date, we allow anybody to come to any of the, you know, committees?
Right.
And so, would we be excluding council members from being able to have conversations within the finance committee because? So is it like the first ones that show up or the, like, how are we, like, that gives me pause and concern? Because we're allowed to be at all of the other committees? And so like, changing this one to be separate and kind of exclusionary from council members to be able to participate? I don't love that. So, I'm thinking, and I, like, I understand what you're saying about people, but it seems like. Yeah, I think that it seems like having a standalone committee with a couple of council members that are chosen to serve on that committee, as well as some members, like you have it kind of set up here, does make a lot of sense. And I'm assuming that that's also what Oklahoma City is doing. And so, they've found a practice that works well for their community. So yeah, I, maybe it would be better if there's an executive session? Like, I, I'm interested in figuring that out with finance, but yeah, I just don't want one committee of council to operate separately and differently than the others.
I would agree with that. Might be easier to find people since it's only every three months.
Yeah.
Only four times a year.
And, 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 did you want to get, sorry.
Mostly, I was just curious about executive session. And like, you'd be meeting four times a year, that it would seem most of it could be open? Or is, are we talking the whole meeting is sensitive and would need to not be public? Or is it part of the meeting would be public and then the extra?
So as the city auditor, I would be taking direction or guidance from the audit committee as far as, I guess, audits to take, audits to take possible allegations that they may have. I don't think all of, I don't think city council as a whole is excluded from the meetings. I, as far as participating, that's one thing, but excluding as far as your attendance and being there, I don't think you're excluded. Because again, I have to, as an internal auditor, I have to present to audit committee, council and city manager, just for the efficiency of the operations and et cetera. But I don't, I don't think that would be excluded from.
Could, and just to make it like livable from council's perspective, because I know y'all want one more meeting. To, to be able to facilitate the agenda for the audit committee to be, you have the finance committee meeting, it concludes, you adjourn, and then you convene as the finance committee immediately following, separate agenda, separate rules of engagement potentially, maybe based on what Oklahoma City does. And so, it's, it's one of those Thursdays when people who are already participating already have it blocked off on their calendar, and we don't add another meeting to another day on your calendar. I think we can make it very efficient that way. It would provide the, you know, the most number of participants possible.
And that's, that's doable. I guess, I, I'm looking at Oklahoma City's organization. Oklahoma City's eight times larger than we are, some, some number in there. And as I look at that, they, they need to be more sophisticated, to use the word, than, than I think we do in this. I think it's easier to grow a department up to that standard than it is to break it down afterwards. Because then, why are you guys doing that, kind of a thing? I think starting off as simply as we can, doing, breaking up the agenda does that real easily. It's, it's a clean split. We just move meetings, kind of a thing. And start off simply. And then, as we say, because in, in reading the ballot language, we were talking about this this morning. Ballot language says to hire an auditor, and it infers, if I'm right, that there'll be help for the auditor. It doesn't say that we're going to build a, build a department, basically. So I, I don't know what that means. I don't know what, what they, they, they meant by that. She obviously needs an assistant of some sort. Everybody does. Everybody's going to get sick. Everybody needs a backup. And so, in, in trying to keep it simple, trying to keep it as, as just the finance committee doing that. The finance committee does include all of council. And, and, I mean, there's no, every committee does. That way, we're staying kind of fat, a flattened level. Without getting elegant yet, when we, when we need, see the need that we need, have to go to something more complicated, then we, we just change the resolution. That's, that's an easy thing to do. Yes, ma'am?
Catherine, do any other committees ever go into executive session?
No, executive sessions are very limited. So I pulled up the statutory provision. Employment, hiring, promotion, demotion of an employee, negotiations with employee groups, purchaser appraisal of real property, confidential communications between a public body and its attorney concerning, pending investigation, claim or action. And then several other things that don't really apply to cities. But an executive session would not be allowed to discuss audit findings unless, you know, and I'm not on the committee and not, shouldn't be. But I would have to come in and say, this needs to be confidential because it's a pending claim or investigation. And that's, and my advice is that we need to be in executive session under the statute.
So there's potentially two different types of, you know, audit reports or presentations. So hypothetically, situation one is Shakira goes in and audits the Department of IT just for, you know, policies, procedures. And we can go through, you know, the findings, recommendations, easy peasy. Conversely, we have situation B where she discovered fraud, somebody's been embezzling money. So that, you know.
But that's not some.
If that could trigger an investigation.
But that's not something you bring to audit, audit committee anymore.
Awesome.
Immediately.
I'm talking, please. So that, could that then construe or qualify as a situation where, you know, we have this investigation because she found fraud by an employee?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, those are the types of sensitive items that she may or may not find. But just like the routine departmental, AI audited this department, here's findings, here's recommendations, yeah. No big deal.
Very public stuff, yeah.
Yeah. Sorry. But no, I agree, we should do what you said. I mean, the, have the basic committee. That way, we're not looking for new people to fill it. And most of the stuff on the committee, looking at this, isn't something that's going to be confidential and require an executive session. I think we're kind of, no, I wasn't aware that if you find something, you know, fraud, waste or abuse, you immediately go to the audit committee. I thought you would go to city manager or legal. So you would immediately call like a special session then?
Not a special session, but a meeting to let them know the allegations, the findings, and then possibly get guidance on where I should go. Not that I don't know, but as far as procedure with the Norman.
But it would be more of a special meeting, because we, we wouldn't wait three months to.
No, no, you would not.
Right. So it would be basically calling a special meeting and then we could make that.
Basically be, this is my preliminary findings and I'm, I'm seeking to open an investigation.
So, so in that scenario, since the finance committee does meet monthly, if, if the audit committee met, and we wouldn't anticipate three more months, but she found something in between that and the very next finance committee meeting, we could agenda the audit committee to meet immediately following the finance committee's meeting, and you're never more than four weeks away from your next opportunity.
Frankly, if it was dire, it wouldn't, we could.
We could absolutely call a special session if the world's on fire.
We had to do it. Tuesday would be best.
Yes, ma'am.
So basically, the only instance we would ever go in executive session is, and I'll pick on Sean O'Leary because he's gone. Like Shakira's like, Sean O'Leary used that credit card all the time, sort of thing. Like if it's naming a person and there would be like a HR consequence, employment type consequence, that's the only reason for executive session.
Yeah, and we'd look at each of those individually, just to make sure we're, everything correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So as we, when I understand about, you know, council and the having it separate, like I think that that is, you know, a possible, easier solution to do that. Is there a specific reason that it would be helpful to have citizens serving on this committee? And if we exclude that, having those positions for, you know, citizens at large to be on an audit committee, what are we missing? Like, what is the benefit or?
The benefit of that is public accountability or accountability to the public. It involves at-large members who are professional auditors or accountants. Just makes the, the decision-making process a little more fair, a little more transparent, a little more accountable to the public. For, for instance, just, you know, it's all county, city council members. So every audit I may have may look like I'm being, you know, told to go here, there and there. But if there's public people on there, it's like, no, this is a fair thing. The public says yes, city council says yes, they agree, we're going to go forward.
And I, and I think too, I mean, I could be inferring this into why the public voted for us to create an internal audit position, but I think that is what they were looking for, was the accountability um, for the public, um, and to be able to kind of have these discussions and have someone that is running these audits and kind of looking for, you know, different things over and over. Um, so it's in the spirit, I think, of what we intended, so don't necessarily want to lose that element.
Let's just say it now, who picks these, uh, community members, because that is a bloodbath, um, with council. So like, who, who picks them?
Wonderful, city manager and council.
Well, we'll have a committee in a year. Okay.
Well, you would have complications, like they have to be.
And that was my thing, I, I agree with you, Councilmember Schuler, is that we have to be able to get this information out.
Yeah.
We have to have everybody, when you post it on a website, it's, it's out to the public. We were elected to make sure that we spend the people's money correctly, in my opinion, that's one of the things we were to do. If we sit down and we goof that up, we find out that I'm doing something, I'm, I'm influencing somebody to spend money illegally or something. It should be public information, and, and, and it should be immediate. But all of us are held accountable every two or three years, depending on the term, uh, for what we, we did in, in that. If we have a person that is, we pick, it, it's a pretty hard, you guys are pretty rare birds when, when it comes down to looking for somebody who's actually qualified to understand exactly at the depth that you do. We're lucky to have you on here now. So as we sit down there and look at that, how are we gonna be able to replace you without having a bloodbath? And I thought about that for hours, and I have not come up with a solution. Because every time you're gonna, we get into personality product.
Can we draw names out of a hat?
If.
That is how it's been done, council members have been drawn from a hat.
Counsel agrees, Shakira can kind of give you insight on the, the resume of those individuals whose names would go in the hat. It, it wouldn't matter from staff's perspective which name you drew out, if they met that qualification, probably the more random, the better.
Literally out of the hat, I'm not joking. Normally I joke, but I'm not joking about this. Like, if you could narrow down the most qualified.
For how long a term would you pull these people?
Isn't it written in there, it's like in staggered terms?
Yeah, it has five, I think, people in there.
But like, one. Everybody kind of leaves, so it's pretty just.
Yeah.
And, 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 and we, that's doable, it, it's not my favorite, but it's doable. It, it does make it transparent enough. I just think a lot of the transparency comes off of the, off of what's posted on the website. Everything that's not confidential should be posted on the website so that people can see, you know, how did we spend money on motel, hotel, hotel motel tax, uh, and, and who collected it, what was it gotten, how'd it get in there? Most of us are not gonna read that stuff. Does, you know, we want the summary at the top, please. Yeah, we collected it correctly, or we got it all correctly, so, anyway. Are, are we done with that part of the conversation?
Okay.
Next thing, I, I, if you'll explain to me a, a sentence, this is over here under section five, independence and objectivity. And, uh, second to last sentence in there says, "The city auditor will confirm to the audit committee and the city council at least annually the organizational independence of the internal audit activity." That doesn't make sense to me.
So, basically, I have to confirm that I'm independent.
Oh.
Um, every year, uh, independent of, basically.
Us, influence.
Yes.
Coercion.
Right, so basically, I have to, in writing, say what committees I'm a part of, or say, um, yeah, what groups I'm a part of, and then I can't audit them to maintain my independence, uh, things like that, it's just a statement of, I'm, I'm free and clear.
Impartial.
There's no conflict of interest, there's no biasness.
Hundred percent with it, I just didn't understand the sentence. Organizational independence didn't make sense to me, that's all right. I have some grammar things.
Hesitant to say from you.
It's okay, not bad, go ahead.
And there's some more, I, I made some, some things that I would change, but they're, they're not, they're not, uh, the whole thing about audit report, uh, when we're sitting down here in ten, audit reports, the, the last sentence that, that comes from this, uh, it says, "The city auditor shall notify the Cleveland County District Attorney." I would add in there, "At the direction of council, under the advisement of the city attorney."
Agreed.
Yeah, I just, I.
I couldn't, I, and that, I should put that, but I couldn't necessarily go and liaison or do anything with the Cleveland County DA, they're probably not legal. I'm gonna go to Catherine first, anyway.
He, he, and, 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 uh, he's a nice guy, but, I don't know.
Where were you at?
I was.
That was under ten, ten.
Bottom of page four.
Bottom, yeah.
Oh, okay. It's like the last sentence.
Last sentence. I've got, do you want a, a copy of my scratching?
Oh, I actually have one.
Yeah, okay.
You gave me.
That, uh, that's, that, the, the other things are in there. Uh, uh, going on, and there are some things in here that I think are part of, of finances deal. If we go to audit committee, which is twelve, it'd be my page seven of eight. VII, conducting overseeing the requests, et cetera, in there. That's finance, that looks to me like finance committee's job. Uh, it says, uh, conducting or overseeing requests for proposals and selection process for the firm conducting the annual financial statement audits. Isn't that what finance does?
Historically.
Yeah.
Yes, but in terms of.
And do you want to move them over to you?
No, 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 in terms of audits, I, I may very well be, um, auditing finance.
Sure.
So, as far as, I guess, them completing the RFP process for documents, I would be kind of creating murky work. So, um, I've, uh, in my experience, I've just always had a legal, uh, professional dealer, so, I've always, well, I've been, um, auditing my requests to Catherine and Anthony.
Sure, it, it, it just, overseeing that is absolutely not a problem, it would just be, it looked to me like you were gonna do the RFPs for the, for the process, and so.
Oh, yeah, well, no, so in law, we would give the list of documents, we'd give it to a lawyer, ADA, they would do a subpoena or RFP. Um, in this situation, we don't have any subpoena powers, right?
Not.
Right, so I've just, um, for one of the investigations I'm conducting right now, Catherine and Anthony were able to write a RFP for that investigation.
Got you.
Because of the investigation, I don't want necessarily to include other departments in the knowledge of, you know, audits that other departments are going through, so, just to keep my name clean in that way.
And that, other.
So I think that's more for getting information for audits.
Yes.
Versus selecting that, the external auditor.
Okay, that's the way I understood it, selecting that auditor. I don't know, Anthony's pretty big, I don't want him coming after me. One of my things in life. Any other thoughts from anybody else on, on this document?
Only two I had marked, we already went over, so.
Oh, good, we agree. I think, I think it's one of, it's just honing down, figuring out where we are, and, and getting things in there.
Making progress.
Making progress, trying to get things.
Are we gonna try to have the first meeting after the first quarter of this year? But how, how, how quickly are you ready to start presenting to a committee?
Fire up the committee.
So I am currently writing, um, the internal audit policy and procedure manual for the internal. Uh, and then I'm also building a risk assessment, uh, process in Excel. I have my risk assessment questionnaires completed, so it's just about, I guess, getting this governance situated, and I can take off. I'm just, I'm kind of waiting to take off.
So.
I'm, I'm on the tarmac.
It doesn't have to be January, March, June, I mean, it could be February, it could be the initial.
Because I'm like, do you want to wait until this fiscal year is ended, and then you've audited it, and then first meet with the committee in September? Or are you, how far back are you going in audits? What fiscal year, I guess, are you starting with the audits?
I'm starting with the most recent fiscal.
FYE twenty-four, okay.
Um, I would probably go back, uh, to my experience is five years.
Okay.
As far as the statute of limitations for audit, things like that, if there, if I was to find something. But as far as a audit plan, I would like for the audit plans to span three years. I know that you put, um, three years on the thing, but I've really, I, I want to do an annual report of the three-year audit, annual, uh.
So rolling three years.
Yes, so, it'll be, every three years, I'm presenting a new audit plan, but every year, I'll be presenting updates on what was done, what needs to be done, what's to be completed. So with that, I would like to have an audit plan by the summer.
Okay.
That's, it's, you know, impressive, but.
So you want to go after the, after this fiscal's done, then.
Then begin.
I would like to present a comprehensive, risk-based audit plan by the summer.
So in that timetable, so let's, let's think June-ish, maybe June, finance committee, um, that those at-large members with the background that Shakira kind of outlines, uh, council could all have a copy of what that background is, make contact with your constituents who may meet that criteria, and prepare for the drawing of the names, maybe at a May finance committee meeting, so in June, though the individuals could, could be invited and be on the agenda to start rocking and rolling at that June finance committee.
Yeah, and if we don't find a person to draw out of the hat, or we have two people, well, two, two'd give us a choice.
There you go.
One's a choice, so, okay, I, that works, we can facilitate all that. Thank you for your work, it's, it's.
Thank you.
Not easy setting up a division.
Thank you for the opportunity, yeah, I plan to put the notch tomorrow.
So, on this timeline, I was just looking at the review and approval, the internal audit charter is reviewed at least annually by the audit committee. So if we're starting the committee in June, when are they reviewing the charter?
May or June.
Okay, so like, right off the bat, you want to.
There's any updates needed, uh, with trends or things that are happening within the city, and you want to change or add or delete.
I guess that kind of makes sense if it's running alongside the fiscal year, too.
Yes, exactly, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to kind of start the, start the audit plan when the year starts, when the fiscal year starts.
That makes sense.
That's a lot of work to get done, but.
And I'm excited.
Yeah, I am too, it, it, it'll be, it's a good thing. As you say, it's, it's a way of being able to prove that we're spending the money correctly and efficiently.
I'm not, I'm not sure who said it, but someone said that the public eluded, or they felt like the public wanted this internal auditor to.
That was Councilmember Schuler.
Yeah.
Is there anything that was like?
Steven, what was said that night?
Wasn't it, I think.
What happened that night?
Wasn't it a recommendation of former councilmember Robert Castleberry, who is also a CPA?
Right.
He recommended doing this, and so then it went to the, uh, our charter review committee, and they also, it was a citizen committee, recommended that they put forward a charter amendment to create the position of the division.
Did he see something?
No, he just said it's best practice.
Chair of the finance committee for a few years, he was on council for six years, so.
Thank you, former councilmember Robert.
You'll probably, you'll probably see his name in a hat.
Yeah.
His name will be in a hat, it's coming, it's gonna be. You know, he's gonna go for it.
So there's audits, but not internal, but.
Oh, his hat, his name can't be in a hat.
It could be, it, he, my guess is he would meet that criteria.
If it's, if it's been a year since he served.
Yeah.
It's been several, what was the professional criteria?
He's a CPA or.
And a con professional.
Yeah, he's a CPA. Twenty nineteen, I think, Allison came on.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, so he's, he's clear, free and clear, hopefully.
So far, he's out of jail. Item number two, discussion on cleanup in downtown Norman, so we're gonna talk trash with Michelle.
I love to talk trash.
Hey, Michelle, happy new year.
Happy new year to you.
Let's talk trash.
Let's do talk trash. So, I, I want to preface what I'm gonna talk about very quickly, with the fact that, and I can't say it, you know me, that we got these responses Friday at four, so this is a cursory look from this morning. Okay, it sprinkled in throughout my rest of my day, so a lot to do, okay. So, with that, let's go in. Here's the background, so I added a little history, uh, of the litter crew. Most people didn't really understand where it came from, or how it started, you know, it was this, it was that. Well, I found the original memo, October two thousand two, Doug Banner wrote it, yeah, to get a litter crew. Which is fantastic, and so the original allocation, and that's also the year that my youngest son was born, and that one, I was about to say. Uh, the original allocation was seventy-one thousand dollars, and that was in two thousand two, for a four-person, two hundred and fifteen days, that's about three quarters of the year, to do cleanup. They were also tasked, though, with doing the mowing and cleaning out the debris from the channels, so that was interesting, I didn't know that. Um, in two thousand eight, it went away, because there was a downturn, and things got cut pretty dramatically, from what I could tell in the records, uh, but in two thousand eight, Greg Hall, who was your streets and stormwater superintendent, brought it back, um, and it was forty-eight thousand. Both of those came from the general fund, it was a public works, um, program endeavor. Uh, and then in two thousand seventeen, council went ahead and approved our Lake Thunderbird TMDL plan, the monitoring and compliance plan. And that's where we included, uh, the litter control as part of, uh, the TMDL BNP's that we're gonna do, the best management practices that we were gonna do to make it better. So that's where that came from. And what I've done here is the top map, uh, it's kind of hard to see, but this was the two thousand eight map, two thousand eight, two thousand nine map, and what you can see is that long red line that goes out, that's Alameda. And the, the one partial street there is twelve. So that's all they did, was pretty much what we would consider, or I would consider, urbanized core Norman area. The below is the two thousand eighteen, twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-two map. You can see that, well, it's hard to tell, but I'm gonna tell you, that aside from our, just cleaning in the creeks and streams along here, just in our major streams, uh, most of the cleanup was along streets and roadways, ditches, um, within the Thunderbird watershed. Again, ties into what I was saying about the TMDL. The SOP for the actual litter crew was included in the two thousand nineteen policy manual that you guys adopted, uh, before, when we were trying to get a utility and bond passed. So, this is what we talked about, this is why we got to where we are, litter's increasing, we have, uh, people in our community that would benefit from having a low-barrier employment opportunity. Boom, the RFP, right, Oklahoma City does it, Tulsa does it, so. Uh, the content, this is what we asked for, we wanted them to have a, a day's wage for beautifying our city, but also have wraparound services provided, so access to healthcare, mental health, housing, permanent employment, that kind of thing. Um, and this is what we offer to provide, funding for the program, that's right, the van, the crossover van, um, and then assistance with the litter disposal, we'd also weigh it, because that's a great metric to have, I'm just saying, uh, and then program oversight, right, there could be changes with negotiations, so that's what we talked about. We issued the RFP November seventeenth, deadline was last Friday, uh, and then this is the perceived or proposed timeline if we continue. So, what did we do? We got two responses, two responses. We got one from the Mental Health Association of Oklahoma, they're the ones who run the Better Way in Oklahoma City and Tulsa. And then we also got one from Norman Caravans, you guys are familiar with them as well, they're a local nonprofit here that provides the transportation services for unhoused members of our community. The range of cost was three hundred thirty thousand and some change at the bottom end to five hundred thirty thousand and some change at the top end. The difference between those two numbers, uh, the lower end is working three days a week, um, with eight to nine participants, the higher end is five days a week. So that's, that's what we got. Originally, we had the allocation for the litter crew of fifty thousand dollars, so this is substantially different from that, you need to know that.
And just, you know, in, in, the, the reason this conversation began, uh, Mr. O'Leary, who used to oversee the litter crew, he said, you know, fifty thousand dollars isn't buying us what it used to, so what they, two hundred and fifteen days back in two thousand two, it just got pared down as far as the dollars went, he said, we're down to like ninety days, and we're not getting it done anymore, so I would propose in the upcoming budget, we increase that number, and I said, pick a number where you think you could actually have an impact, and he said, probably in the hundred and fifty thousand dollar range.
Yep.
So, um, the ability to employ a targeted. the ability to employ a targeted population and provide some wraparound services probably accounts for what we're seeing in, in part of that, it wasn't, that wasn't what we used to do. It's a thing that council says we, we would like to do, we can absolutely make that happen. In my ongoing conversation with Michelle and Chris, uh, Chris cringes when I say, "We're picking up litter, why is this not a solid waste function?" And we do recognize that in, in Michelle's oversight, we wouldn't want to provide a service paid for, uh, with solid waste funds in certain neighborhoods where in other neighborhoods we would force the property owner to do that work out of their own pocket. And it seems like we may wind up with a solution where it's partially general fund funded and partially solid waste funded, uh, with Michelle and Chris's oversight, uh, just to make sure that, that the stuff that really is the public benefit, the general fund's paying for, and, and the stuff that's the specific benefit, solid waste would pay for those pieces. But we'd be able to track what litter we're picking up, we'd be weighing it, and if they're putting it in orange bags and we're picking up the bags, we would know whose mess it was to pick up. So, um, I, I, I think we are learning a lot, and I'm glad Michelle went back to the beginning of the program because it was educational for all of us to recognize, we've been doing it a long time, we're talking about doing it bigger and better and having better outcomes for those that we hire and, uh, better outcomes for a cleaner Norman at the end of the day.
And the cool thing about my division, as Mr. Powell pointed out, is that it actually is funded from both utility money and from general funds, so.
Did we have a number on how many people would employ?
Eight to nine.
Eight to nine.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a rotating cast or would it be the same folks?
Depends, so cursory look at the RFPs, I'm sorry, Ms. Grant, cursory look at the RFPs, um, shows that they're a little different in the makeup and has, you know, one of them has a little bit of a flexible thing and one doesn't, so I really, it's required in-depth evaluation.
A lot of this comes, uh, about from discussions on, two things concern me, one's litter downtown, the other stuff's getting stuff in the creeks. The creeks are horrible with Walmart bags and stuff, awful stuff. We have li- uh, litter problems downtown, everything from normal trash to, to human waste to other things that just don't need to be here. We, there isn't a solution. If there were a business district downtown that would take care of that, they would tax those people to do that. We weren't successful in getting that done, uh, we'll try again, but right now, we, we need to do something that we can do positively for everybody, and, and I know on here, we, we're talking downtown. But downtown to me means everywhere we need it, it's, it's, it's Norman. If, if we need to go out to your ward to clean up along twelve, that's not downtown, but that needs cleaning.
And that's what I would hope, Mr. Heckler and council that you guys would consider, is that, um, absolutely, we should help make our community look beautiful for our visitors and our workers, absolutely. But we also need to, um, address our water quality issues.
Since we have, um, we've got parks maintenance people out in the field every day, we have solid waste crews all over town every single day, we have lots of eyes on the community, and if they recognize, oh my gosh, you know, something fell off the back of a truck in some neighborhood and there's this trash everywhere, the ability to say, let's direct that crew over to this neighborhood this morning and, and pick up that specific mess, we'll have the ability to be flexible and very responsive just based on the number of city and Norman employees who are out looking and see these things and can radio it in and make a call. I think we'll, we'll be able to solve a lot of those immediate problems.
Uh, but this is all like public, like right of ways, obviously creeks, so if it's on HOA property or gated community, like.
We currently would not be able to pick up trash on private property because we're publicly funded, but I will defer to the.
Please, the second right, I mean, that's, that's something we're going to have to, to address, I'm sure, and, you know, what we do now is if our crews are out and they see trash blown into, uh, a creek bed or, or area where they, um, where they have control and access and, and it's their property, then, then we're making phone calls to try and get them to go clean that up, and that would not change, I wouldn't think into this. We've got to be careful because we're using ratepayer funds, but we're not benefiting individual private property owners.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I was going to say with the data that you would be giving, D E Q, about weighing all this, uh, what do you, what benefits do you think would come from that? Like knowing where, who's got like the most litter all the time or?
Well, for sure, no, I will give you that. So that's kind of the excitement for me, is having data, because we have a phenomenal G I S team, oh my God, they're just phenomenal, and they'll put whatever we want in a layer. This way, yeah, absolutely, we can find out where we have the issues, where are those open dumps or areas that we need to constantly come back to? What are some controls we can do in those areas to make it so it's not so much? Maybe we can put a sign, maybe it's a signage, maybe it's a, an access control, maybe it's something else, and then we don't have to come and clean up that area all the time. All right, thanks.
Um, so Darrell, Chris, if you feel comfortable with this in your budget, then I'm in favor of proceeding with the program.
Well, I would say.
Okay.
For this one, which budget? Because, I mean, you know, it's a press, and, and I would say at least, um, gonna, I, I'm pretty loyal, you will see that in me, and utilities is my home.
Sure.
We're broke.
We're trying, we're trying.
Yeah.
Solid, if it's going to be funded, partially general and then solid waste, like.
And, and we're good at, we have, we're, we're really, we're truck drivers is what our group is. We don't have a lot, we moved to the side card pickup to get rid of soft tear tissue claims back at the city.
Right.
Automation, you know, so we're kind of moved more in that business. We will sometimes hire the temporaries to help in picking up the trash, but we always are there for like volunteers that go to parks and clean it up, if they'll get it in bags or get it, we'll set a dumpster. We, we totally accommodate that, we'll come pick it up, go take it, dump it, pay for all that. But we're just not good at really being out there, either managing people to pick it up or picking it up, we're, we're better at driving the trucks. And, and then the budget, yeah, we're tight, I'll have to go ask for more money. We are doing a, um, cost of service study right now with Riff Telus on our sanitation, and, and what we're going to have them do is find out who's paying into the sanitation fund and who's benefiting, and we're going to rebalance and make sure it's fair because we don't want residential subsidizing commercial, and we don't want commercial subsidizing residential. So we're going to have those numbers for you probably within about three months.
Well, if you're going to ask for more money, I know a guy. I know a guy.
So that, my next steps, you can see, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Are just, you guys want to do it, do you don't, and then where do we find it, so please, that's all I have.
Without getting into too many details, because I know you can't and the review will be separate.
Sure.
Um, but the budget, the three hundred and thirty or the five hundred and thirty thousand, um, like we're providing a transportation for them and all maintenance and gas and things, so that would not be included in the three hundred and thirty, so is that for them to pay the people?
So the primary.
Or are we going to be doing that, like, and just like kind of administrative?
So primarily what the costs, what it looked like were the administrative costs and the, um, paying for the.
Okay, so that would be wrapped up in.
They're paying for it, yeah.
Perfect.
When, when.
That makes me feel more comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, we're not going to be the bosses.
Yeah.
For, um, yeah, two, well, two companies that answered the proposal. So caravans, they work with the homeless and transient community, right? Who, who would they be hiring, would they be hiring?
So for both of, both RFP, both responses would hire from our unhoused community, absolutely.
Oh, that's wonderful, that's a great initiative.
And when, the way they have it set up are different, but they're both going to pull from that.
Right. From community. Okay, that's.
I'm supportive.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hobart?
I'm supportive as well, um, but part of me wants to do the three days a week to see how it goes and then expand, the other part of me says, do it five days a week and that way it's a consistent, a consistent five days a week job for somebody maybe.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, and I think it could be a selling point of a future rate increase, because it's been two thousand and eleven, twelve since the last, uh, solid waste increase, so part of a selling point could be that this voter, this increase would be for enhanced cleanup.
Cleaner Norman.
If you say yes, if you want to, yeah, cleaner Norman.
Better water.
In addition to regular, you know, this would be one of the benefits you'd be get for this, this rate increase would be.
Clean water.
And I, my expectation would be, it's pretty much citywide, but.
Yeah.
I mean, like downtown, but campus corner, West Lindsey Street, Main Street.
It can be a route.
That was just where the conversation started.
Especially the places where people are at the most, so the city parks.
Yeah.
And the, the, you know, the primary shopping destinations.
We're upsetting Nash over there.
You could do a game day focus, you know, a Friday focus, et cetera, and, and obviously, yeah, with all the Lake Thunderbird watershed, a whole lot of Word five, uh, when the need arises. And we would also think the opportunity to take advantage of this van and wrap it with the catchy, whatever, maybe it's the slogan for the next rate discussion.
Hmm.
But so people see it, when they see it driving down the road, it's not just another white van, it is their litter crew making Norman a cleaner place.
Trash man rule.
Okay.
Trash person.
Trash person, you're right.
Defying Norman. I was going to say, I know you can only scroll at cursor, but, uh, did any of them have routes? Like, oh, we're going to go to the Joe, we're going to go to.
So what, uh, one proposal did say we will go to hotspots of, um, panhandling and that, so. The other did not say it would go to specific locations, it said it would have connections with people in the community and would pre-arrange a location.
I guarantee we can find you some places. It's a target-rich environment out there.
How each of these were approaching, uh, the populations and questions?
And Catherine, if I'm not mistaken, uh, if council awards a, a, a contract, the ability then to begin negotiating with that respondent, and we can kind of fine tune this, this is again, this approach is new to us, it's being done in other places, but yeah, I think council can definitely find comfort in what that final, uh, approved contract looks like with the service provider.
On your current timeline, that's March to have all that done, so we would have the selection process internally and then start negotiating with whoever the successful proposal was.
It's a lot of work by March.
Yeah, but I would really, all right, I have an ulterior motive, right? Um, we always celebrate in Italy, we celebrate Green Norman Eco Month, right? Yeah, middle of March to middle of May, remember? So I would love to get it going for that, you know.
Yeah, soon as possible.
Yeah.
Break a bottle of city paint.
Just say no, she does the.
We're ready, we're ready.
Just saying.
Anything, any other questions from council?
No, feel good.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
Yay, exciting stuff.
I love your trash enthusiasm.
You should have seen her presentation on the, the reclamation.
Was it the sole? No, it was the one where you take.
Household.
Household handling this waste.
Latest is maybe.
Good stuff.